Okay, I'd like to call to order this October 12th, 2020 Planning Commission meeting to order. Would ask anyone to turn off their cell phones or any other devices so that you don't disrupt the meeting. Anyone have any questions or comments, please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. Director Sheilin had to leave this evening. He had a family emergency that popped up, so he's not with us, so we'll be a little out of sorts, but I think we'll make it all right. The first order of the business is approving the minutes.
One second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes on October 13th. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The minutes are approved. We will now go to the first case.
First case is case P07A20, the petition of Civil Site Group Incorporated requesting development plan, approval for Lot 3 Markland Crossing for property described as Markland Crossing Minor Subdivision, Lot 3 replat in the city of Kokomo, Howard County, or Howard Town, Center Township, Howard County, Kokomo, Indiana, containing 1.66 acres more or less at 1832 East Markland Avenue.
One second.
Is there someone here to represent this case? Please step forward.
Good evening. My name is Brian Cross with Civil Site Group, offices at 160 West Carmel Drive, Carmel, Indiana. I'm here tonight on behalf of the developer, BDC Realty. Dave Cravens is here in the audience with me, along with the architect, Rob Bennett, with Integrity Design. This particular proposed development, I was before this commission earlier this year and also last year. We redeveloped this piece of property on Markland Avenue. It used to be, I believe, Astro Bowl in the years past. It's been multi-tenant building. It was demolished last December and January, been replaced with the first two lots along Markland as the Wendy's Restaurant and Valvoline Instant Oil Change. This is Lot 3 of that commercial subdivision as it was replatted. It's 1.66 acres. We're proposing a 13,700 square foot multi-tenant retail building. The building itself will face primarily to the access drive of Walmart. Advance this if I can. And it doesn't want to advance right now. Sorry about that. But the building's about, again, 13,700 square feet. There's 100 parking spaces proposed. The building will fall in the center of the site. There we go. Thank you. The drive access aisle that goes to Walmart currently, also to Indiana West Land, one of the lots to the east there. You'll enter off of the access drive, retail shops along the frontage facing the east. And one tenant also has a larger tenant space on the south end of the building. Perimeter parking, utilities, infrastructure, site lighting, and landscaping will be installed. The, like I said before, in December, the building was demolished. There is still some pavement on the site that needs to be removed, some old light fixtures, light poles, and some other outstanding items from the demolition past. We hope to start construction on this in December, and we have met the requirements of the zoning ordinance and the overlay. I will also forward to the architectural plan. Sorry, this is the controllers. Just to give you an idea of the building elevations and what's proposed there. So that's the landscape plan, just perimeter landscaping, internal island landscaping. Building-based landscaping will be installed along the east wall as well. Sorry for the... There we go. Pretty pictures. We finally got them. So this particular elevations, they're labeled, the south elevation would be facing towards Markland, mostly behind, obviously, the Wendy's Restaurant and the Valvoline Instant Oil Change. The tenant there is for auto service. The other elevation, the east elevation, is the primary elevation facing the Walmart access drive, the shared drive to the site with multi-tenant facilities on the remainder of the site. And obviously, the north elevation, which is already facing the Walmart parking lot, and the west faces the legal drain to the west of the property. So again, any questions you might have, we're happy to answer those. Any details? We do have the architect here as well, so if you have any specific questions on the building, we'd be happy to answer those.
Any questions from the board?
Did you say there was retail and housing? Is that what I did? Is that what you stand on?
I'm sorry, I couldn't...
Just tell me the use of them. Is retail?
Yeah, it is commercial retail. Yes.
Any other questions from the board? Any questions from the audience? If there are none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor of case P07A20, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion's approved. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next case is case P13Z20, the petition of Davona Anderson Beard requesting the Kokomo Plan Commission petition and recommend to the Kokomo Council for a change in zone classification from R4 medium density urban residential to OC office commercial for property described as Garden Place Lot 1, or Lot 50, 100 by 200 east side of Lot 50 and the east part of Lot 51, in the city of Kokomo Center Township, Howard County, Kokomo, Indiana, containing .458 acres more or less at 1613 North Delphus Street.
Good eve...
Second.
Good evening. My name is Davona Beard Anderson. I would like to have that changed on the official record. Davona Beard Anderson.
Your address, please.
My address is 16, of the property, 1613 North Delphus.
Thank you.
Kokomo, Indiana. I'm a family medicine physician and the CEO and owner of Ahava Wellness and Direct Primary Care. I'm a lifelong member of, resident of Kokomo outside of my educational pursuits when I went to medical school and so forth and so on. I would like to request petition to rezone the address to R4 OC. The property we use as a medical home for my direct primary care practice, this address is located within a healthcare desert, meaning the nearest primary care offices are on the far west and south sides of the town. In the past, there were PCP offices, which is primary care offices on the north side of Kokomo, but that hasn't been the case since I was a child. Direct primary care is a relationship-based practice, meaning the typical panel is between 200 and 600 individuals. So the traditional family practice would be between 2,000 and up patients per panel. There's a contract between the patients, and there's no insurance company involved. This means the patient would pay a monthly fee to access my services. Because of this, traffic is minimal. There's no traffic, basically, because I will only be seeing about maybe four to six patients a day, and each visit is like an hour apiece, so there's no wait. You just come. The driveway is large enough to, for multiple vehicles, so there wouldn't be any street parking. The home is about 2,000 square feet on the property, and renovation would not adversely affect any of the surrounding properties. Any concern for hazardous waste? Medical offices are mandated by licensing boards to have systems in place and companies that come and take away any hazardous waste. I have already canvassed the neighborhood. Many of the neighbors are previous or current patients of mine and family members, and some have already inquired about my services, and I'm not aware of any opposition to the rezoning proposal. I believe it would be a tremendous benefit to Kokomo and the surrounding community, especially the north side community, where they have walkable access to medical care. Respectfully request a recommendation of approval.
Any questions for the board before we have staff report?
Will there be RNs there, or what's your staffing going to be?
A medical assistant. For me, for now, it's just going to be me. I'll do draw blood, I'll let everybody in, I'm the receptionist, everything. Eventually, as the practice grows, I plan to hire a medical assistant, so it's very personalized.
Any other questions from the board? Carrie, want to give us a staff report, please?
Yep. Davona Anderson is requesting a change in zone classification for the property listed above as 1613 North Delphus Street in order to use as a medical consultation office in treatment. The adjoining property uses and zonings are to the north, R4 Urban Residential, to the south, R4 Urban Residential, to the east, R4 Urban Residential, and to the west, R4 Urban Residential. According to the city of Kokomo zoning ordinance, OC Office Commercial is considered an appropriate adjacent district within the area specified. According to the city of Kokomo Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map, the property is located in an area proposed for medium-density residential, which is single-family housing in varying types between three to six dwellings per unit per acre. Typical medium-density housing would be single-family detached duplexes, triplexes, condominiums, townhomes, and cluster housing. Under land use goals, encourage orderly and responsible development to promote health, safety, and quality of life of residents in the city of Kokomo while maintaining Kokomo as a leading community for affordable housing. Under relevant land use objectives, encourage adequate land for residential, commercial, industrial, institutional, and recreational uses, and designate specific districts in the community suitable for residential, commercial, industrial, institutional, and recreational uses. The goal of the city of Kokomo Comprehensive Plan Transportation Map is to enhance connections throughout the city for improved safety function and efficiency for all modes of transportation, including vehicular, bicycle, and pedestrian networks. According to the transportation map, North Delphus is defined as a local street, which is a street designated primarily to provide access to abutting properties and discourage through traffic. The traffic count for this area of North Delphus is 3,508, and that's on the east block of Ohio is the closest count. The requested zoning change is compatible with the existing adjoining districts, therefore the staff desires the planning commission forward a favorable recommendation to the Kokomo Common Council.
Any questions from the board now we've had staff report? Any questions from the audience?
Yes, I'd like to have one. I have to come upstairs. I'm Dorothy Joseph, her aunt. I live across the street at 1616 North Delphus. Two things I want to know. Will my property tax go up? Or if I got ready to sell the house, would it be cheaper because it's in that kind of a district, or commercial, or residential?
Well, I would say none of us are land appraisers, so we can't say definitively how it would affect your property, but your property taxes typically are not affected by adjoining zoning. Now, if the property were to sell for a higher value eventually, and the neighborhood, the property values around the neighborhood increase, then in theory, it could increase your property taxes. But then it would also increase your property value as well. So it will, it should not affect, it doesn't affect your property specifically, so any sale of your property would not be affected by the zoning of an adjacent property. You can still do all the same things that you've done with your property, and you have the same restrictions and limitations on your property as you would prior to rezoning of the neighbor's property.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the audience? Any questions from the board before I call for count? All in favor, all in favor of case P13Z20, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion is approved. It will now go to the city council.
Welcome business owner.
It goes to the city council and will be presented there by Councilwoman Cindy Sanders.
I will, I will make that, I'll make the comment. Next case is case P11Z20, the petition of Douglas Stellhorn requesting the Kokomo City Plan Commission petition and recommend to the Kokomo Common Council for a change in zone classification from PR Parks and Recreation to C1. What is the official title of C1? So there was a mis, there was an incorrect proposed zoning in the advertisement. It was originally advertised as C2, however, the correct request is to go to C1, and that is a lower intensity district and therefore can be done without re-advertising. C1, the C1 district is medium-scale general commercial. So this is a request of the, to the Kokomo Common Council for a change in zone classification from PR to C1 for the property described as part of the southeast quarter of Section 3 Township, 23 North, Range 3 East, in the city of Kokomo Center Township, Howard County, Indiana, containing 21.96 acres more or less at 3116 West Boulevard.
Can we part approval?
Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Doug Stellhorn. I own Stellhorn Home Improvement located in Rusheville, Indiana. I also own Stellhorn Tri-County Travel Trailers, currently located in Rusheville, Indiana also.
Can you give us your address, sir?
My address?
Yes.
Is 3094 South 800 West Rusheville, Indiana.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. I'm here tonight to seek a zoning classification change so that I can move the travel trailer dealership that's currently in Rusheville to Kokomo. The location at 3116 West Boulevard offers us an excellent opportunity for this dealership. Moving this family-friendly dealership to a location like this would offer us the ability to partner not only with the city of Kokomo, but also with the community surrounding the property. We feel that the things that are happening and that are currently going, or that are future happening, especially with the nickel plate trail, we could be, it could be an awesome asset for us. We are planning on spending a lot of money to clean up that current location and making it a location that the existing neighbors would be proud of, with also the potential of increased property values. We would remodel the two existing buildings. The 81,000 square foot existing facility would transform into a new showroom, parks and accessories showroom, and offices. The 96,000 square foot existing building would be transformed into our service department. We have budgeted approximately 125,400 to remodel both the interior and exterior of these two buildings. We have budgeted approximately 32, 35,215 to remove the unsightly putt-putt golf course and repair the parking lot and add LED lights. We have budgeted approximately 16,250 dollars to remove the overgrown and outdated baseball fencing, the ball field lights, the bleachers, and the old concession stands. We have budgeted approximately 12,840 dollars to clean up and replace the existing landscaping. This totals to over 178,000 above and beyond what the property is going to cost. I hope this shows the commitment that I'm making to the neighbors and to the city to make this property a showplace.
I'm, I'll answer any questions that have...
Any board member have a question before we go to staff report?
How long have you had the business?
I'm sorry?
How long have you had the business, your businesses?
The travel trailer business?
Yes. I guess your, this business, this type of...
The travel trailer business I've had just since past June.
Okay. Are you seeing an uptick in that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And you want to, you want to move it to Kokomo for, is it a larger area?
It's a much larger area. I'm leasing two facilities right now in Rusheville. They're kind of across the street from each other. This facility would give us the ability to grow that business like it needs to be and also offer a very, like I said, family-friendly oriented business here in Kokomo, a camp store, camping store.
You're not planning on using this facility? It sounds like you have another business, construction-related business?
Yes, sir.
You're not planning on using this facility for that?
No, sir.
For that?
No. No, the construction business would stay in Rusheville.
Okay. What are your hours of operation?
Hours of operation are Monday through Friday, 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Saturday, 9:00 to 2:00, and that goes from November through February. And then March through October, it's Monday through Friday, 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM. Saturday, 9:00 to 3:00. We are not open on Sundays. We are not open on holidays.
Mr. Stellhorn, are these going to be inside? I mean, you're going to, is the showroom inside? Are you having anything outside?
There'll be travel trailers outside, yes.
How many do you anticipate that you're going to be having outside? I know you've got a large area.
Right now, we currently have about 22 or 25. If we get to a location like that, we could get that up to maybe 35 or 40 on the outside, four to five on the inside. The inside would be more of camping accessories, things like that.
About how many customers? Sorry. Go ahead.
Can you describe that your lighting that's going to be on the outside, how you're going to control and maintain your light pollution?
The lights? Basically, the only lights are going to be are be parking lot lights. They'll be an LED dusk to dawn, so there won't be, you know, it's not going to be like a big halogen bulb or anything like that. They'll just be a regular LED, which is kind of a low-bearing light, so to speak, if that makes sense.
And so the light pollution shall be contained within your property lines?
Yes, ma'am.
So there's almost 22 acres on that site currently. How much of it is developed right now, as far as, are you going to...
There's...
Make more hardscaping on it? How much, how much is parking and building right now of that 22 acres?
The parking out front has got, has currently got 140 spots. The putt-putt area that's out in front of that parking lot will be removed. That's where the trailers will be. The parking lot will stay exactly the same that it is right now, just be redone. There's three, there's three, no, there's actually more than that. There's like five existing buildings on there. We're only going to keep three of them. The other ones are all coming down, just the two main big buildings. Then there's also a maintenance building that will keep lawnmowers and things like that in.
So do you foresee developing more of the 22 acres? Because it's probably, what, about two or three that's currently that you're going to utilize?
Right now, right now, no. Just planning on keeping it maintained, keeping it mowed, get all that, all the stuff that's back there out of there, and that's the only plans I have as of right now.
Any other questions from the board?
About how many customers do you see? I know it's going to vary, but give us a range of number of customers.
Absolutely, absolutely. So Forest River, who's the main manufacturer that we get our trailers from, the only manufacturer we get our trailers from, they projected that if we moved into a location like that, they projected that we should do 500 new campers every year. So if you look at that, with that projection, then that calculates out to about 150 used trailers that we do, 450 service customers, 250 miscellaneous customers, about 1,350 customers a year. If you look at the amount of days that we'll be there at 300, that's 4.5 customers a day. So as far as traffic, even if you round it out to five people per day...
And you're going to have peak times and low times, so...
Right, exactly.
Even if you multiply it by three, you'd be at 15 a day.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Mr. Stellhorn, have you thought about, are there any barriers, trees that you're going to be planting because there's a neighborhood there?
Planning?
Trees, you know, because there's a neighborhood with trees or any kind of barriers?
Right. Absolutely. The one thing that we did like, the side of the property that faces Boulder Way, Dr. Kinsey, the owner that has it now, has, had planted a lot of those, and I apologize, I don't know the name of them, but the tall pine trees. We were going to continue that all the way down the, all the way down the property line. And like I said, that's one of the reasons we've got such a, such a high, I'm trying to think what the landscaping, the landscaping was more than I thought it was going to be, but it is what it is. 12,000, or 12,840 dollars just in landscaping and cleaning that, cleaning that area up. So yes, we were. And then we budgeted some of that for if the nickel plate trail does come through that way, that we can make that real nice also.
Technically, the cloverleaf trail, but...
(laughing).
Yep. But we get it.
Any other questions from the board before we have staff report? Carrie, want to give a staff report, please?
Staff report for case P11Z20, petitioner Douglas Stellhorn is requesting a change in zone classification for the property listed above in order to be used as a travel trailer RV dealership. The adjoining property uses and zonings are to the north, C2 medium to large-scale general commercial; to the south, R1 very-low-density residential; and R3 medium-density residential; to the east, R3 medium-density residential; to the west, PR Parks and Recreation, and R3 medium-density residential. According to the city of Kokomo zoning ordinance, C1 small-to-medium-scale general commercial is considered a, an appropriate adjacent district within the area specified. The petitioner is also applying for a special exception in order to meet the standards of the city of Kokomo zoning ordinance. According to the city of Kokomo Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map, this property is located in an area proposed for parks and recreation, which are public and private parks used for passive and active recreation, also low-impact commercial recreation facilities. Land use goals, encourage orderly and responsible development to promote health, safety, and quality of life of residents in the city of Kokomo while maintaining Kokomo as a leading community for affordable housing. Relevant land use objectives are to encourage adequate land for residential, commercial, industrial, institutional, and recreational uses, designate specific districts in the community suitable for residential, commercial, industrial, institutional, and recreational uses. The goal of the city of Kokomo Comprehensive Plan Transportation Map is to enhance connections throughout the city for improved safety function and efficiency for all modes of transportation, including vehicular, bicycle, and pedestrian networks. According to the transportation map, West Boulevard is defined as a major collector, which is a street designed to facilitate the collection of traffic from local streets. Also, it provides circulation within neighborhood areas and convenient ways to reach arterial streets. The traffic count for this area of West Boulevard is recorded as being 2,000, or 6,431. The requested zone change is compatible with the existing adjoining districts, therefore the staff recommends the planning commission forward a favorable recommendation to the Kokomo Common Council contingent upon the passing of the special exception.
Any questions from the board now we've had staff report? Any questions or comments from the audience? Please come forward, state your name and address.
My name is Ellen Bowen. I live at 2905 West Boulevard. I'm directly, I would be directly south of his proposal. I feel this is inappropriate. This is a truly residential area. Once you allow this commercial-type behavior, you're going to erode the fabric of our neighborhood. Now, in addition to what he said, what his plans are, make me more concerned because that means, you know what? I get to look at his RV trailers every day. His concerns about the lights, the last three weeks, the lights are terrible. They shine through people's houses. There is no way to protect that. And I know he's talking about those pyramidal U-type things. That will not screen it. Now, we also have a problem, I'm worried about the traffic, but also, even though the drainage is improved, it is still not good. There are people all the way up and down Boulevard that when it rains heavily, we have ponds in our yard for several days. I especially, and you're going to reroute all the water, and it is going to come again across the street into the, that area. So I tell you, I am opposed. Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience? Please come forward.
Thank you very much. My name's Kevin Weaver, from 892 Boulder Way in the residential area right across from this. You know, I would essentially echo what she's saying there. I mean, this, this property was zoned as a Parks and Recreation, and it's in the midst of all these residential areas, not just Boulder's West where we live, but in the midst of all of these different ones. And there's a reason that those kind of places are put in the middle of a bunch of residential areas, because it makes sense. And this simply doesn't make sense for this area. You know, when I hear about an area for, for selling trailers and this kind of thing, you usually kind of think of this kind of thing being more on the outskirts of town where it's a little bit cheaper to buy a lot of land, but also you're not like, you know, you're not disturbing a lot of people through that. My wife and I have lived in this area, in that residential area for about six years. We have a two-year-old. One of the reasons that we moved there, you can guess, was a quiet neighborhood, and I just don't think that we're going to get that. I appreciate the assurances that he's trying to give in terms of... I appreciate the assurances that he's trying to give in terms of light pollution, sound pollution, that kind of thing, those kind of issues. I don't necessarily see that as being terribly effective. And, you know, I'm glad to hear of the hours, but the two-year-old takes naps, as many of you know. And I'm just, I'm very concerned between the, the act of the construction of all of this, as well as just once it's in operation, not just the traffic. Traffic can be annoying, that's one thing, but just in terms of the noise and the sound and the light coming from this, you know, I very much think this would be a bad decision. Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience? Please step forward.
Tim Metz, 2518 Gray Rock Lane. You know, I live in a Boulder Way. Can I have a question directly to?
Yes.
There were some rumors about a rehab and addiction recovery center going into this plot of land. Is there any truth to that or any?
Absolutely not. No, I'm sorry.
Just, just the RV?
Yes, yes. Camping store, RV dealership.
As I said, these trailers are RVs?
Yes, sir.
And they're new RVs? This is not a camping spot for?
Absolutely not.
People who own RVs themselves?
No camping whatsoever. No, just the sale, just the sale of new campers, pre-owned campers, camping store.
Storage area for, I said, some camping, RV camping stores also act as storage locations?
No, sir.
No, no storage for somebody else's winterized camper?
No, 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 sir.
Okay. Yeah, the other question I had was regarding, you may want to rethink the rehabbing the putt-putt golf course. It could potentially, if you get this approved, draw some customers to you. That facility, there's not very many in the, in the Kokomo area anymore. It would also keep part of your property as a recreational facility.
That's all I had. Thank you. Any other one else from the audience? Please come forward.
Hello, my name is Tina Dixon. I live at 898 Boulder Way. The back of my property faces that property. And I also, I sent out the letter to let, because I was told last month, this was supposed to take place last month, and when I came here, I was told that it was going to be turned into rehab facility. So we kind of had to turn our wheels, but I did let everybody in the subdivision know. I am, even though I love camping, and I think that it's a great idea, but just not in a subdivision, not next to a subdivision. It's in the city. It's surrounded by subdivisions. Our subdivision is on the west. There's a subdivision on the east. There's subdivision on across the street. That street is already, already a very busy road. I'm, everybody here has traveled on Boulevard outside of town, goes straight out, all the way to Galveston. It's a very busy road as it is. When we bought our property there 15-plus years ago, you buy a property for its location and surroundings, correct? It's Park and Recreation Department, that's, or Parks and Recreation. And that's what it been. I was hoping that somebody would take over, that they built some beautiful ball fields there. It hasn't been 10 years. There's some nice ball fields back there. It's batting cages. They're building the new stadium on the other side of town. I can't see why somebody wouldn't want to buy that property, because teams are going to be coming here doing travel leagues and things of that nature and want to practice baseball and softball. And as far as I know, there's only one place, and it's in Rusheville. I've visited your business out in Rusheville, because I love camping. I think, I thought where it was was fine, but I don't really want it backed up to my property. That is all.
Anyone else in the audience?
Hello, my name is Amy Henderson. My address is 3413 Covey Lane. So we are in the subdivision just west of Boulder's West. Some concerns I have, what are the size and class of RVs that you would be holding there? Because we've been in our neighborhood for four years, and every day, 3 o'clock, our entire house shakes from blasting at the quarry. And yeah, if you're home long enough, it blasts several times a day. My concern is the stability of the ground that is under this proposed dealership, because my understanding is that they've been tunneling deep under that field south of Duffin Bar for decades now. And again, like others have said, the traffic on Boulevard. It's already insane. When Powell games are going on, that's great. I don't mind it all summer long, but you can't get up and down Boulevard Street without people slamming on their brakes, cutting in and out of traffic. And we bought out there because we wanted to be out of town, away from light pollution. And we're very concerned that we're going to lose that, even with the assurances of, you mentioned, putting trees up along the west side of the property. Well, how far north will that go towards Duffin Bar?
We were going to take them down from, they're already, they're basically as far down as my property line would, would allow us to take them down there, essentially.
I'm just, I'm very, very concerned. You know, like they mentioned, I love to drive out Boulevard Street because it's residential. I like to see, I grew up playing golf out there, mini golf, with my friends on the weekends, as I'm sure you did. I really wish someone would buy it and rehab that. I keep telling my husband, if I hit the lottery, that's what we're going to do. But I don't see that travel trailers belong in a residential neighborhood. There are plenty of empty parcels up and down Dixon, along 26, along Alto, where I think this would be a much more viable location, because I'll be first one to admit, I don't camp. My idea of camping is a three-story hotel with no elevators. But I can't imagine that smack in the middle of a residential neighborhood, right by Howard Haven, is where people are going to think of to go to buy a camper. I worry about traffic. You know, we're way off of the highway. Put it someplace closer to a highway where it's going to attract a lot more attention. So that's all.
Anyone else in the audience?
Kevin Fiveco, live 878 Boulder Way in Boulder's West subdivision. I guess my concern is, I know he said he was going to use this property in the front half of that 20 acres, and I know another gentleman mentioned it's storage. I mean, what kind of guarantee that you're not going to decide to, you know, rent out space to store trailers later? I mean, you know, this is, there's no guarantee, you know, if we rezone this, you know.
Outside storage, I believe, is not allowed in the C1 district.
To the storage of the trailer?
Hold on, let me pull up C1 district. Well, I say that outside, outside storage of, hold on. Clearly, there's going to be, I mean, there's going to be RVs there, right, in the front?
Which I don't, I don't think that's a great idea. I don't want to drive home every day and look at a parking lot of RVs. I'm sure you guys wouldn't want them in your backyard.
Or front yard.
Or front yard, yeah.
I'd have to, let me, let me, let me do some looking here real quick.
You know, it's just the concern, I know, you know, boat marinas and stuff, you know, they do storage over the winter. And I'm afraid, you know, you've got 20 acres there. I mean, there's nothing, you know, if there's nothing in place saying you can't use that at a later date, I mean, you know, that's, that's a lot of space to store things or turn into a full, another parking lot. I mean, it's just, I guess those are my concerns. I just don't want them in my backyard. Thanks.
I would say that any significant modification to the property would require development plan approval, which is another, a different process than what we're doing here tonight. So there, if there was a parking lot going in the back, or if there was additional development of, additional buildings outside of the existing buildings that are there, there would be a formal plan development process that would be required. He'd have to submit plans, and we'd have a public hearing, just like we're having now. I also want to make note that we do have lighting standards, and those lighting standards are going to apply. And it is based on, the amount of light that can come off the property is based on the adjacent land, land uses. And you do have a light meter, the plan commission does have a light meter, so they go out and check to make sure that properties meet that standard. I don't, I'm not going to find it. That's something Greg can answer.
Before I call for this vote, I'd just like to, before we people, the way this board works and what we look at is, this little book right here, we sit there, look at it and read it, and try to figure out what's the best thing to do, what's good, what's not good. We have a column in here that tells us what is acceptable for us to look at, to make it a little different. After, after the vote tonight, if it's a yes vote, it goes to city council, and city council is the one that has the final verdict on this. We look at the zoning part of it is what we look at. So that's what this board is for, and that's what we look at.
All we're doing is making a recommendation to the city council.
We make a recommendation. So.
Mr. Stranahan, I have a question. In regard to any flood mitigation issues, I'm sure as a city engineer, I guess I'm, want to ask you about that, is there any?
There's, so, there's a.
For retention pond, I mean, I'm just.
Without, without a development, there's no requirement to make improvements to the existing drainage. I understand that there are some drainage issues out there. There's, there could be any number of reasons for the, for the drainage issues, and obviously just as many remedies for it. There's a legal drain that's adjacent to the property, I believe, that could have some impact, and that's a county function. So I believe that addressing drainage issues at this point, without, without significant development to the property that would require development plan approval, the, any drainage issues are something we need to look at separately. So that's something we need to look at regardless. I don't believe that any of the changes that the petitioner is proposing at this point with landscaping and removing the putt-putt golf course is going to increase the amount of drainage issues, or the significance of the drainage issues at this point.
Any other questions from the board? Any questions from the audience?
Joey Bennett, 4604 Mayfield Drive, Kokomo, Indiana, approximately two miles from there. You know, for the last 10 to 15 years, I've driven by this place, and it's been an eyesore for years. I know Doug personally, and I know his integrity, and I know he'll say what he's going to do. And I'd like to almost kind of coerce him into keeping the putt-putt course, simply because that's where I took my wife on our first date. And so we are still married because of that putt-putt course. So with that, I just know him as a person, and I know that he'll do what he says he's going to do. So, thanks.
Anyone else in the audience?
And I will say, you may be.
Ma'am, you have to, these are not my rules.
My thing is, there is nothing against this man. Nothing, right? My thing is the process and what we're putting it in. And let's say he goes ahead and disaster hits him, and he has to sell this property to some chop shop or whatever it is, and it's even worse. We now have no recourse. The only way, the reason for us to go is that we have to move, and he's a very nice man. However, the profit of one should not come at the profit of many, I mean, at the detriment of many, which we feel that's what will happen.
Good point. Any comments from the board? Sir, you have something to say, please step forward.
My name's Todd Warden. I'm the, the listing agent for this property and work for Hardy Group. Just wanted to let you know that this property has been for sale for probably four, five, six years. Hasn't been used for baseball or recreation for eight or nine years. And, and I've tried to help the owners maintain the property in the two years that I've had the listing. It's, it's such an eyesore. It also has attracted a lot of vandalism. I have to go out several times a week when the alarms go off and shut off the alarms because there has been kids that break into the, the building. I think that if you get some activity out there and get rid of the eyesore, I just think it'll, it'll benefit the area.
Good, thank you. Any other comments from the audience?
Mr. Stellhorn, are you in contact with this building already, or have you purchased it?
I'm sorry.
Have you already purchased this building or in contact with this building?
I'm purchasing it on, with an agreement that we have, so, so contingent on.
Any other questions from the board?
I just want to say, it's, it's a parks and recreation zone. When you take away parks and recreation zone, you're taking it away from the children. That's all I want to say.
Thank you. Board members, any other comments? If you have something new, please come up.
I had a question that I forgot to ask. When Mr. Stranahan was reading from the red book, the little supply thing, you mentioned a special exemption or exception?
There's a, there's a, the Board of Zoning Appeals is considering a special exception for the case. I don't know specifically what the, what's the special exception. There are, so every, every zoning allows, has certain uses, and then they also have certain uses that are allowed if you get a special exception. So in this, in this situation, it has to be rezoned to C1, and then there's a special exception that allows for this particular use through the Board of Zoning Appeals. But I don't know exactly what the.
Have you got C1?
I've got the, I've got the special exception uses, but I don't know what's being requested. When is the Board of Zoning Appeals meeting?
It won't be till, there was not, it's next month, this month's already passed.
So it's, it's next month. I, I honestly don't, I don't know what it is, I'm sorry. But I would say that the zoning can be approved, but, but he still can't, apparently, there, there's a, there's a special exception that's required in order to use that, to use the facility. There's, there's a number of specific special exceptions that are in the, in the ordinance, and, and it, is it?
Probably auto-oriented business.
Probably auto-oriented business. So specifically for the auto-oriented business portion of it. And that'll be heard at the Board of Zoning Appeals, which is the sec, the first Tuesday? First Tuesday in December. So even if this, if this were to be approved tonight and then were to go to the council, it would be two readings, right? So it'd be the next two meetings. There would still be the Board of Zoning Appeals meeting, which there'll be a public notice for, and it would be heard.
Okay, because that was another concern. My husband texted me and said, don't forget about the pneumatic sounds. With it being an automotive-oriented business, you know, we worry about the sounds from pneumatic drills. I know you mentioned there would be the service department there, and I know there's, you know, a lot of maintenance that needs done on that. And then several people have commented several times about the possibility, that I'm still waiting for the trail to be extended out there for those of us in Boulder's West and Urbandale and Orleans Southwest to access. But then I worry, how would we access that if we have this RV dealership right there between our properties? And someone had mentioned too, the possibility that it might actually turn into someday down the road, a campground where people could, like someone mentioned.
So, just to.
Make it a, you know, that's recreational.
An ironic situation is right now, under parks and recreation, which is the current zoning, campgrounds are approved. So there could be a campground there today. What we are proposing is to change it to C1, and, and campgrounds are not allowed in C1.
Okay. So it couldn't be the RV dealership with the campground behind it?
Not without being rezoned. Back to PR.
Okay. Okay. All right, so that was all. Thank you.
And I would note that that special exception travels with the owner of the property, and it's only for that individual, meaning that if, if you trust Mr. Stellhorn, but you don't trust any successors, which is what ma'am, ma'am, you brought up earlier, that one doesn't travel with the property. That special exception stays with that original owner. So if the property was sold to another individual, that special exception goes away, where that individual would have to reapply.
And it's only for the special exception that is requested. There's a list of them, but there will only, there's only an approval for one, more than likely.
Okay, any questions from the board? During the call for vote, all in favor of case P 11 Z 20, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. It now goes to the city council, and will be presented there by Councilwoman Cindy Sanders. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone have anything under other business?
Did we do that yet?
Not yet. Anyone want to go to the county meeting next week? It's a long one, I'm telling you that right now, before you volunteer.
I'll go.
Okay. Have you been to the new surroundings?
No.
Pretty nice.
Okay.
Next on the agenda is approval of claims.
We've approved claims in the amount of $25,565.58.
Second. We have a motion, and a second to approve claims. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Claims, claims are approved. Chair needs a motion to adjourn, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Got it.